All right, it's nine thirty. We will call to order the Cumberland County Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meetings. And we will begin with the Salary Board and calling that to order, please, Audrey.
Commissioner Neder.
I am here.
Commissioner Fachi.
I'm here.
Commissioner Eichelberger.
Present.
Controller Wickham.
Here.
All right, this is the point on the agenda where we open it up to public comment for the Salary Board. If you are online and wishing to make public comment, please use the raise your hand feature. Is anyone indicating that, Audrey, at this time?
No.
No, is there anyone in the room at this time wishing to make public comment on the Salary Board portion of the agenda? There is no one here indicated, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the May twenty-second meeting.
I will move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Next up is the approval of the Salary Board actions.
I will move to approve the Salary Board actions.
I'll second the motion.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Was that both, Gary and Al?
Yes.
Okay, Al, okay, thank you. We couldn't quite hear both, each of you. Thank you. So those are approved. Is there any other business to come before the Salary Board at this time? Okay, it does not appear. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved. We are adjourned from the Salary Board. We will go into the Board of Commissioners meeting and begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will call the Board of Commissioners meeting to order and begin to move, please.
Commissioner Neder.
I am here.
Commissioner Fachi.
I'm here.
Commissioner Eichelberger.
Present.
Now we open this meeting up for public comment on any non-agenda items. If there is anyone online, please use the raise your hand feature if you'd like to make a public comment. Is there anyone?
No.
Anyone in the room? Sir, you would like to make a public comment?
I would.
Okay, could you please state your name?
My name is Scott Drizga, spelled D-R-Z-Y-Z-G-A.
Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. May I stand?
Yes, please. Come forward.
My name is Scott Drizga. I'm the new Executive Director of the State Geospatial Coordinating Board. I'm also a resident of Cumberland County, Monroe Township. Commissioners, I stand here grateful for the work being done by your Geographic Information Systems Department. Justin Smith, Michael Mullford, and the others who worked with them have made Cumberland County a safer place to live, work, and play for everyone. They have done so by working with Pennsylvania's Emergency Management Agency, by sharing accurate geospatial nine-one-one data that meets state standards, and by expertly mapping their own backyard, everything in that polygon behind you. Thanks to this collaborative effort, Pennsylvania now boasts that all sixty-seven of its counties maintain working nine-one-one data, and all sixty-seven have been onboarded to Pennsylvania's next-gen nine-one-one geospatial call-running system. It's a huge accomplishment. That means a digital backbone that supports emergency service delivery can route emergency services quickly and correctly to a caller's geographic location, regardless if they're using a landline, a mobile device, text, or voice. A huge accomplishment. Everywhere in Pennsylvania. I came here today to recognize this accomplishment, because I don't think it gets enough attention. It's a huge win that was earned by counties hiring retaining GIs talent, by adopting a statewide data standard, and by everyone involved working together to achieve a common goal. And as Executive Director of the GeoBoard, I want to see the efficiencies and lessons learned during this modernization effort applied to modernizing other mapping efforts that support both local and state government services. Cumberland County is a growing county. It's one of the fastest-growing in Pennsylvania. I'm sure you know that. It's attracting new businesses, homeowners, apartment renters, commuters every day. Land is being developed. New buildings and roads are being built. New voters are being enrolled. A lot of change, and all of that geospatial information cannot be absorbed accurately or completely in human memory. It just doesn't work that way anymore. That's why we need a digital twin that supports local and state government, and that's why Cumberland County and the Commonwealth need talented GIs people like Justin and Mike. Last, if you're not familiar with this GeoBoard, I keep mentioning it was established to provide advice and recommendations to the Governor and the citizens of our Commonwealth on technical mapping issues, uniform data standards, geospatial policy, and better coordination. If you're interested in learning more about the Board, the county GIs pros or the county commissioners already on the Board. I'd be happy to meet with you in person or perhaps at an upcoming CCAP conference. Thank you for my listening to my public comments.
Scott, thank you so much for that comment. We really appreciate it. We really appreciate it. We've, this has been a heavy lift for the folks in our GIS department, and they've done tremendous work. Commissioner Fachi, I know you're quite close to the emergency services, and it's a critical, critical component of that.
Yeah, and I think it's a model of success.
And we do need to update on that.
I wasn't gonna say.
I think it would be great if you came in and met with us, so staff can reach out to you and we can set up a meeting to do that. I'm very interested in learning more.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Well, I normally say now we're to the best part of the agenda, but that was pretty good too, Scott, so thank you. And we're really proud of our team for the work they've done there. And we have another great component. This is kind of peripheral to that. We are here to honor our Public Safety Department and the Carlisle Barracks for receiving the 2024 Army Partnership Award. So that's fantastic. With us, we have Bob Shively, Robert, and Robert Baxter, Director of Plans, Training, Mobilization, and Security at the United States Army Garrison Carlisle Barracks, along with Colonel Noly, I believe, is here as well with us today. So, folks, come on up and tell us a little bit about what.
I did switch out Bob Baxter for Colonel Ward.
I apologize.
Stay back, I'll take photos.
We got that covered, Colonel. Come on.
Sure. We'll get your photos.
So first, I wanted to express kind of how I experienced this. So about two years when I came to Carlisle Barracks, as I'm wearing this uniform, we come and we leave, right? You're not here all the time. So it was about a week prior to meeting, taking the command, and we had our full-scale exercise. And for that year, it was a vehicle-borne, explosive violence. So you go into the parking lot, and there was a vehicle that was torn apart. There was mannequins everywhere. There was all of this, and I was like... And then I come to realize that parts of the mannequins came from the county.
Okay.
They used the county's Emergency Operations Center to do our block public address. So media would come in and they would play and be part of this exercise. So I saw the tremendous partnership with the county from my initial stages of being at Carlisle Barracks. Another thing, we have our firefighters who weld the gate every day, two or three times a day to respond to the county. So we are really grateful for the partnership because we train, stay trained, we stay ready, we stay responsive to the community. Right now, we're hiring free, so we don't know how long that's going to last. However, we are really grateful for the partnership to continue. We benefit tremendously from it, and I think the county does too. So I'm presenting this on behalf of the Army. So Bob Baxter went to the Pentagon to receive this award, and I'm here to present it to you today. So this is a very big, there was only a few of these given out army-wide, and this is one of the partnerships that stood out. And the War College actually recognized about eight of our individuals on staff that participated in the partnership as well.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Colonel. We appreciate it very much. Bob, this is really you.
Yeah, and Colonel Noly, we thank you so much for your service and support and coordination of, you will be deeply missed, I understand, moving on. But it has been a wonderful partnership, and that's also due to your leadership during your visit, and we're so glad you were here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Colonel.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, I guess you take.
I'll just say quickly, it's been really decades, I mean, built upon, I mean, we have Bob Baxter, Colonel Ward now, and Tom Vannett, our EOC, working with their IOC, back and forth, but a lot of planning and exercises. And really, we've been neighbors, partners, friends, colleagues for years. If you go back, I mean, even the likes of Barry Sugar, Skip Brownier with the Interagency Working Group, Todd Wheeler, that's no longer with us, and I mean, just years and years of Barry Furtbar. Am I missing anybody?
Oh, you're going back.
Yeah, I know, I'm dating myself a little, but, but, I mean, it's just been a wonderful partnership, and we certainly appreciate your leadership, Colonel, and all the work that's been done back and forth between sharing resources and time, so.
I might just be the one in the uniform to give the thing. It's really the team. I mean, Bob, Kurt, and team that maintain the right work.
Colonel, we're the same. So we'll do a few formal pictures here to commemorate this, and.
Same word.
Good.
Yeah, can I get you to step back? Right there, yep.
Too close to plug.
All right, we're good here. Want to take several?
Thank you, Ben.
The paparazzi will make sure you guys.
Thank you very much.
Hey, you are welcome to exit. I'm sure you have other things to do. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That takes us into the consent agenda, then. We'll turn that over to Chief Kirk, Stacy Snyder.
Okay, thank you for sure. The consent agenda is a list of routine items that do not appear to be controversial in nature and do not seem to require any additional discussion. Now would be the time to make a request if you would like discussion on any agenda item numbers five through ten. Hearing them, seeing them, Commissioners, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
So that takes us then to the regular agenda, which is a list of non-routine items. They'll be discussed and may be acted upon individually, and we'll start with Agenda Item eleven. We have James Brand online to discuss and seek approval for donations totaling $2,000 to sponsor the 2025 LAPC Summit. Take it away, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. Morning, everyone. Kind of hard to believe we're back this time of year again, but the Department of Public Safety is asking for the Board of Commissioners' approval to receive sponsorship money to be used in offsetting the expenses to host the Local Emergency Planning Committee Summit. As most of you know, this one-day conference brings together county facilities, emergency management, first responders, local state government, and more, allowing all to interface to be better prepared for an emergency. The Summit Planning Committee has received payments from Advanced Disaster Recovery and MCM Consulting Group in the amount of $1,000 each for gold sponsorships. Both of these companies are multi-year sponsors and very much appreciate the support that they've given to the mission. Again, we ask for your approval to accept the sponsorship money to be applied towards the summit. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I'll move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Hey, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, James. The next two agenda items, we have Justin Miller joining us online. We'll start with number twelve, which is Discussion and Possible Approval of Resolution 2025-11, which is regarding establishing a Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Justin?
Good morning, Commissioners. If you recall, the Recycling and Waste Authority's fifty-year term expired in mid-April. So what we have before you is a resolution to establish a Solid Waste Advisory Committee. Essentially, the resolution recognizes that you value input from public experts on solid waste issues. It defines the type of representation that the county is looking for, and it also appoints the seven authority members to be the first members of the committee. Initially, with staggered terms, three of them would have two-year terms, four would have one-year terms. After that, it would be two-year terms. Any questions on the resolution?
Do not have any, and I will move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Justin.
Thanks, Justin. You want to go ahead and provide some discussion on the recycling and waste bid results and recommendation to award the paper shredding services contract?
Yeah, so earlier this year, you approved putting out a bid for paper shredding services for county departments and also for two public events. We used PennBid to put that bid out, including sending courtesy copies to several companies. We only received one bid. It's from a local company in Carlisle, Shredding Solutions. It consists of a mix of onsite shredding services, offsite shredding services, and two one-day events. The total bid from Shredding Solutions was $24,685. I had estimated a bid of around $22,500, so I felt pretty comfortable with the bid, but I also looked at, you know, how do we, how do we make sure it's a good bid? I compared their numbers to a omnia consortium pricing that the county could participate in, and I think one or two departments does now. And it, even with the consortium pricing, Shredding Solutions pricing was a good bit cheaper, and I think that's due to the fact that they're located so close. These companies that have to travel distances are going to have transportation costs, so I think it's a good bid, and I would recommend that the county consider entering into a contract with Shredding Solutions.
So has there been outreach to the other departments that are using the other, the other company to see if we can integrate them into this as well? Okay.
Yeah, yes, we've done that, and some of them may have to honor an existing contract for a short bit, but actually, Shredding Solutions, Kelly, is doing most of the work already for the county, by far a large portion of it. So it'd be a matter of just integrating a few of the others into the program. And then we'll, I think, we'll give a little bit of time to see how successful it is, and then we'll work on trying to integrate even a larger portion of departments into the program.
Thank you.
Just to supplement what Justin is saying, because this has been, what, like a three-and-a-half or four-year process, right? So we've been, we've been talking about this, and Justin has been doing all of the legwork and the research on it, and the end goal is to have a county-wide solution rather than a department, individual department solution, and Justin has been spearheading that.
Very good. Excellent. So I will move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Justin. I'm now going to turn the meeting over to Angela Smizer to discuss contracts and grants.
Thanks, Stacy. Good morning, everybody.
Moving on to Agenda Item fourteen, I will call on Jamie River to discuss the contract for children in youth. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning. This is for Appalachian Youth Services Incorporated. They are a group home service for teenage males. They are a small provider, so we don't get to use them too often, but we do like to have them on hand. They have two levels of service. Actually, a new one is added this year. So that is one of the changes, and the other change is their previous level of care is increasing 7.4%. Appalachian Youth Services does a really good job at maintaining their costs. We have not given them an increase for a couple of years, so this is pretty minimal. Also, their actual per diem, per day, is very low compared to a lot of our other residential programs. They are citing increases to their staff wages, allowing for higher-trained staff to come in to handle some more of the complex cases that they're seeing, also with the new level of care that they're including this year. They have added on-ground recreational activities to their program this year, addition of metal detectors for staff and client safety, and they've revamped their treatment process, allowing for additional individual and group therapy, and allowing these kids to have more face time and getting mental health services. Any questions?
Sounds like a very good addition, Jamie. Thank you. I have none. I will move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie. That takes us to Agenda Item fifteen, and I will call on Brooke Weary to discuss a grant application for Conservation District. Good morning, Brooke.
Good morning. Today, I am seeking approval to apply for the Department of Environmental Protections Growing Greener Plus Grant for $260,000. If awarded, the funds will be used for a stream restoration project on the Big Spring Creek that will focus on stream bank and wetland rehabilitation. Project partners include the Fish and Boat Commission, who completed the project design and will provide construction oversight. Western Pennsylvania Conservancy will handle the bidding process and payment of the contractor, and the Big Spring Watershed Association will work on the riparian area, including removing invasive plants and planting native species. This grant is a, has a three-year term. However, if awarded, construction is estimated to take place in the summer of 2026. The only landowner is the Fish and Boat Commission, and they have given their permission by signing a landowner commitment form. The grant requires a 5% match, and the Fish and Boat Commission has committed 21.8% of in-kind match to the project. Therefore, we are not asking for county subsidy. Commissioners, thank you for having me here today, and I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Brooke. I don't have any questions on this. It's like a great.
Thank you.
It's moved. I'll second. It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. That takes us to Agenda Item sixteen, and I will call on Carl Goshorn to discuss a capital project request for conservation. I'm sorry. Gary, you're showing on the screen indicated. Can you please try talking again?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yeah, because I don't think there was any volume the last time that his name appeared up there. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, Carl, the floor is yours.
All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. The Conservation District is seeking approval to approve, purchase a Ford Escape, replacing a seventeen-year-old Ford Escape that has 121,000 miles on it. The CoStar's price from Cochia Ford in Wilkes-Barre is $30,640. The district has just a little bit of history. The district has a fleet of six vehicles. We use those vehicles to go out into the farming community and work with them, putting in practices, also inspectors on construction sites, so we're an office that gets in the field a lot, so we need to have a good fleet of vehicles to get out there for the staff. Also, in the past, we've had other departments use our vehicles to do field work and everything. Example would be Planning Department has used our vehicles for years to do inspections on their preserved farms on an annual basis to make sure, you know, they're in compliance. And also, we've increased staff over the years, so there's a need for the vehicles. 100% of the cost will be covered by the Conservation District's Clean Water Fund, so no county subsidy is needed for this purchase. I'll entertain any questions you may have on that.
I don't have any, Carl. Thank you. I will move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
That takes us to Agenda Item seventeen, and I will call on Pudgy Zimmerman to discuss a grant acceptance for criminal justice services. Good morning, Katie.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Judge Drew Baker requesting permission to accept a grant from AOPC in the amount of $5,200 with no county match. This will provide training for Tom's Court, the mental health court, to improve their trauma-informed, you know, service with, with mental health folks.
Any questions for Katie?
None for me. We'll entertain a motion. I will move to approve. It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Moving on to Agenda Item eighteen, I will call on Yvonne Sworer to discuss the contracts for facilities management. Good morning, Yvonne.
Good morning. This contract with Siemens is to provide our annual fire alarm and testing, along with the sprinkler testing and inspections. These inspections are required by NFPA seventy-two and NFPA twenty-five codes. This is a three-year contract in the amount of $49,236. It's an increase of $8,760 from the previous three-year contract. When the quote was received, Brent went out for pricing. He contacted four other companies, along with Siemens. Each company was to quote the fire alarm, the sprinkler inspections, and separately and combined. He also asked them for pricing for the fire extinguisher inspections to see if that would save us money with that. There was no benefit in gaining to include the extinguisher inspections. Of the five companies that responded, two decided not to provide quotes. Three companies did provide quotes, and the Siemens quote combined turned out to be the best pricing. So we're asking you to approve this three-year contract for Siemens in the amount of $49,236.
You can discuss the next one as well.
Okay. The second one is for the Tradesman International. I'm sorry, and that is a company that provides skilled labor on an as-needed basis. They can provide anything from general laborers, skilled carpenters, drywellers, electricians, and master plumbers. They'll work directly with our staff and at our direction on an as-needed basis. This contract has been approved by the solicitors and reviewed by them. HR has also been contacted and reviewed it. We're asking your approval for a contract in the place of $5,000 to use on an as-needed basis. Brent also added that we have thoughts on how we may try to use the service, but as of now, we're just asking for your permission to have this as an option for future use if we need to use it.
Thank you, Yvonne. I will move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item nineteen, I will call on Miranda Melton to discuss the contracts for MHIDD. Good morning, Miranda.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have nine contracts for you this morning, so we'll, we'll start with early intervention. These are all amendments to our twenty-four, 2025 state-funded contracts. These are all required due to us providing additional mandated services. So the first is for building blocks therapy. This is an increase of $5,226, bringing our contract to $57,700. Next is for Chrissy L. Musselman. This is an increase of $1,422, bringing the contract total to $14,500. Then we have Feeding Little Bellies, LLC. This is an increase of $8,982, bringing our contract to $69,000. We have Jennifer Snyder. This is an increase of $4,054, bringing the contract total to $28,800. Followed by Nicole Custer. This is a contract increase of $2,043, bringing that contract to $36,500. United Cerebral Palsy of Central PA is an increase of $8,411, bringing that contract to $95,222. And the last one for EI is for UPMC Pinnacle Hospitals or Pinnacle Infant Development Program. This is an increase of $74,673, bringing that contract total to $255,098. Then we will move on to IDD, and this contract, again, it's another amendment for twenty-four, twenty-five. Same thing, needed to provide additional services. This is for Alliance for Nonprofit Resources. This is a contract increase of $12,400, bringing that contract to $30,000. Finally, our last contract is for mental health. This is actually a contract renewal for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. This is for Susquehanna Software, and this is the software company that provides software and support for all of our MHIDD and EI databases that allow us to check all of our medical assistance eligibility and pay all of our providers. It is an increase of $2,640 or 5% over last year, bringing that contract total to $55,440. Are there any questions I can answer?
Question, Miranda, but I do have a comment, and I think that this is incredibly important, as we're finding that some of these mandated services are under attack. That the first group, early intervention, those are services that help children. They help children, they help infants, and they're so important for a thriving society and for workforce, eventual workforce. They're important for everything. They help children, they help infants, and they're so important for a thriving society and, and for workforce, eventual workforce. They're important for everything. So I thank you so much for the commitment to providing these, these services. And I know they're mandated, but I really appreciate the commitment. And, uh, with that, I will move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Miranda. That was quite a list.
Thank you so much.
And nicely done for your first time out.
Uh, thank you.
All right, moving on to Agenda Item twenty, I will call on Stephanie Williams to discuss a contract between Rice Park Law and the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Good morning, Stephanie.
Good morning. So I'm here today, uh, on behalf of the Agricultural Land Preservation Board. Um, you may know that after thirty-five years of service, the board solicitor, Robert Fry, retired. So while, um, you know, I don't think he's listening, I just would like to publicly thank him for all he had done for the board over those thirty-five years. Um, so the board issued an RFQ to select, uh, new representation. They interviewed five, I'm sorry. We got five proposals, and they interviewed three candidates. Ultimately, the board unanimously selected Rice Park Law to represent the board and to assist with processing farms through the easement purchase program.
I, I have a comment. So this is the, this is the second or third meeting that we've had. We're planning the, over at Allen Road, where they zoom into the meeting, and you can't hear them.
It's very challenging.
Yes, so that happened with Elizabeth when she delivered some, um, a contract on water, I believe. Okay, and now it's happening to Stephanie. So we've gotta figure out what's going on over there.
I, I would just point out that Yvonne is in the same building.
She's fine.
And she's fine, so, yes, we'll, we'll, um, Stephanie, if you can put in, um, an SRO, please, and then I'll, on my end, I'll reach out to, to Mark and let him know that this has been a recurring thing. We're just, it's very hard for us to hear you. You're coming through. It's very tinny. Hopefully you can hear us well. I feel like I'm now yelling at you.
I can hear you well.
Thank you, Stephanie. Um, the, uh, and I agree with you, uh, really big thanks to Robert Fry, uh, the attorney here in Carlisle for his thirty-five years of service to the I-Board. That's, that's incredible, and, um, I know he, he put in a lot, a lot of time, and a lot of those, uh, those settlements are not always easy. Uh, so I appreciated his, uh, and the board, uh, really thanks him for his long, long service. So, um, if, uh, there's anyone that would like to make a, a motion to, uh, uh, accept the contract, uh, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, thank you, Stephanie. All right, that takes us to Agenda Item twenty-one, and I will call on Claudia Garner to discuss the contract for public safety. Good morning, Claudia.
Good morning, everybody. We have the next three items on your agenda, but we'll go one by one since they're all completely unrelated. The first one is we're seeking your approval for the, um, annual contract for our computer-aided dispatch maintenance through our current vendor, Integraf Corporation, also doing business as Hexagon, in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, eighty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. This is for year number six of our CAD maintenance. This is a five percent increase from last year, which has been the average increase over the life of the six years. The maintenance for our CAD system is very vendor-specific, so it's making it a sole-source option, covering the annual, um, CAD and associated interface maintenance, um, for the systems that touch CAD. If you have no other questions, we'll ask for your motion to approve this annual yearly maintenance contract as presented.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 All right, and.
Keep going.
That's the end of the contract section, so I'm gonna hand it back over to Katie. Thank you. And just before Claudia does continue, um, Mark has already jabbermee's on it.
Awesome, thanks.
Yeah, he was watching on YouTube, and the volume was low on YouTube as well, but, um, we're actually here. We've got Claudia, we're still with us, so thank you, Claudia. And, uh, if you wanna go ahead and talk about the capital project request that you're seeking approval for.
Absolutely. We are asking for your approval for a capital project not to exceed seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of emergency alerting pagers for our department and a baseline allotment for the EMS agencies in the county. The pagers would be allocated based on twenty-twenty-four call volumes with a minimum of four pagers per company. Our fire department, um, dispatching is currently operating on VHF frequencies, which is a seventy-year-old technology, while our EMS agencies are operating on a UF, UHF technology, which is thirty-five years old. Therefore, the implementation of the fire paging has been planned since the implementation, starting, uh, for our P-25 project began, and the fire departments have been, um, advised to budget and expense for this for quite some time. EMS on the flip side, because it was newer technology, we thought we could phase that in a little later, and that was, uh, set to be implemented eighteen to twenty-four months after fire. When we originally signed the contract with Motorola to implement the infrastructure of the P-25 radio system in December of twenty-twenty-five, and as the project implementation continued, newer technology, of course, was made available for our nine-one-one center, um, radio consoles. This meant that these consoles, originally in our contract, would now sunset in twenty-thirty, which would force the county to upgrade in five years after this brand-new system gets implemented. This, um, making the change now, of course, would then potentially save us a million dollars of future county funding, so making that a more fiscally responsible decision to make that change order some time ago that you had approved. With either console choice, regardless if we made that, uh, choice or not, we knew that the interface would need to be developed for the consoles to work together with all the systems that touched it. We had planned for two hundred and fifty thousand in our, um, budget for this year, in the public safety budget, for that interface. However, the technology for the latter consoles is so new that the vendors haven't been able to develop the appropriate interfaces within our project timeline. Knowing how important it is to keep this large project on time and moving successfully, we evaluated the short-term fix versus the long-term successes, and it's become necessary to transition the EMS agencies now to the P-25 paging system versus waiting, which will require new devices now. While I, our fire departments, as I said, have been planning for this, our EMS agencies have not, because they were told twenty-twenty-seven would be their implementation. Additionally, when the county, uh, grant funding process happened, our fire departments received fifty-two percent of that funding, funding, and our EMS agencies received twelve percent. Most importantly, though, by going this route now, we'll avoid county funds from being spent on short-term solutions and be fully prepared for the future by transitioning this. So we're asking for your approval for the capital project not to exceed seventy-five thousand to purchase the emergency alerting pagers for the EMS agencies and our department on a baseline allotment only.
Questions for Claudia?
No, Claudia, thank you for that very detailed background, uh, to how we arrived to this position, and it is really one of these situations where, um, you know, it's better to spend seventy-five thousand now than a million tomorrow. So, um, I appreciate all of that background, and I know that in there, in the meantime, we are going to look for some funding that may or may not help us with this, but, um, thank you for, as I said, that detailed background.
I know our public safety team that worked on this was incredibly thoughtful and well-researched and has presented this very well to the board. Thank you, and I will move to approve.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners, and Claudia has one more Agenda item, uh, which is, uh, the acceptance of a donation.
Yes, this is a fun one. All right, young lady, Sarah Wiest from Shippensburg, has chosen our nine-one-one center as the focus of her Eagle Scout project, where she began, um, she will create an outdoor health and wellness space for our hard-working staff to enjoy. When she toured our facility, she saw our wellness room and heard about how the staff really values and appreciates that having that designated space. Um, her project will dovetail on that concept and provide a peaceful and rejuvenating area where our staff can go outside and get some fresh air, relax, and recharge after difficult calls. She recognized that for some, stepping outside and being in nature to help decompress and reset is more effective for them. Her proposal includes a picnic table, some anorak chairs, planner boxes and flowers, and shrubbery to create that calming sense and a welcoming space. A key consideration in her planning project, um, was to keep the maintenance at a minimum. Brent will, and his staff will appreciate that. All the materials that were selected will be very low maintenance, um, just needing some pressure washing from year to year, and it doesn't require any staining or painting, and the plants will be primarily, uh, perennials. So there'll be very minimal upkeep. We, uh, don't have an estimated completion for this project yet, as she will have to go before the Scout Council Board, and they only meet once or twice over the summer. Um, so she'll need to get that next approval before she can proceed with the project. But at this point, what we're asking is for your approval for her to proceed with her proposal to the council, and then when the project is completed, she'll come back again for acceptance of the completed project. Um, Sarah is a very intelligent and very successful young woman, uh, from Shippensburg. She has nearly fifty merit badges of the required twenty-four for achieving the rank of Eagle, and she will be the very first female Eagle Scout from Shippensburg.
Yeah, that's super cool.
It is so cool. It is so cool. That, and, uh, and, uh, Claudia did not mention, I thought, you know, most kids up against their Eagle Scout, it's eighteen. She's fourteen. So she is a really focused young woman, so fantastic.
Um, hey, I'm gonna move to approve.
Perfect.
Yeah, I'll second. It's a great-looking project.
Moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
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 And Claudia, it would be nice to meet her.
Yes, absolutely. You will, for sure.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll second. I'll second the deadline. I was like seventeen and three hundred, three hundred and forty-five days. And I got it in.
You got it in. Gee, she, uh, you weren't able to make the meeting. She, she came and presented, and, um, so, but, no, 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 but she, she will be around, and I look forward to watching the progress, so.
Thank you, Claudia. Thank you, Commissioners. So that takes us to Agenda Item twenty-four, which is Commissioners' Liaison Reports, and Commissioner Niedewer will start with you.
Yes, so over the last couple of weeks, I was, uh, to a whole host of very unusual things. Uh, we welcomed the Big Thirty-three game at the beautiful Cumberland Valley Chapman Field, and unlike the prior year where it was so hot, this year was almost perfect. It was, it was, this year was cold. It was perfect football weather, and, um, it was in the same day as the Central PA Air Show that Sarah put on, which was just fantastic. Terrified me as a, a person that doesn't like flying, um, when the Blue Angels' wings are eighteen inches apart, uh, it's incredible, but the, the crowds sold out both days, beautiful, um, and people all over the place, uh, with ch- tents and chairs watching from parking lots and, and, uh, oh, quite frankly, alongside the road, which is a little bit dangerous, but, um, I attended two Memorial Day events. Uh, one was at the beautiful Willimere Park. I had not been, uh, to before in Silver Spring Township, and was a participant in the Newville Parade, and we were happy to have that happen without, without rain, and it was a lovely, they gave a lovely, uh, event, uh, there at the fountain. Uh, I attended the Project Search graduation, and we had three proud graduates this year. Um, the Commission for Women's, uh, Childcare Town Hall Part Two was very successful. A lot of wonderful engagement and real action plans to try and develop, uh, some funding for, for, um, child, for early childhood education. Um, I have participated in the, uh, a tour of the Frog Switch. Um, Katic has taken ownership of that project now. Um, but as a PSA to, to individuals, please do not enter that site. Please stay away. It's, it's not open for pictures. Um, it's an active demolition zone, and there are a host of hazards on that property, so they're, they're very concerned, uh, to keep people, to keep people out of that for now. Um, I'm assured that there will be a communication plan, though, for the community, and the transformation of the site will be captured in video and, and with photographs, so that should, that will be shared. Um, I attended the Public Safety, uh, Family Day, well, to welcome that, the families, and Bob, you're, you know, shout out to Claudia and Mike. Um, I think it's an incredibly important component for these new employees, families, to understand that they're not walking into a normal en- environment when they go to work every day, and there's gonna be things that they can't talk about. Um, but will, will have an impact on them, so I hope it helps with, um, band- families understanding and supporting their loved ones that are, are working in that condition.
Yeah, and we had a lot of good feedback, and I think we already had a lot of, uh, input for, you know, making it bigger and better for next year, or the next one.
Perfect, great. Um, I attended the Planning Outreach Meeting. Andrew Bromberger provided a high-level review of the Hatz Regional Plan, and the Audubon, uh, Pennsylvania is developing a tool that translates conservation into actual dollars. Uh, it's called their, they, it's their return on environment, and it, it's a fascinating way that they do it, and just as a, a prelude, uh, four acres of woodlands, uh, equates to about ten thousand dollars per year in benefit. So the plant, the folks that are planning around the county, I think, will really welcome that when they start to, um, integrate into plans, open space and conservation.
Now, I've always thought that I-81 could, could, would really benefit from some return on environment investment. Yeah, there's a lot of things that could happen there to make that safer.
Greener, yes. Yeah. Um, Commissioner Fashi and I attended the Cumberland Connections, uh, ribbon cutting, and last evening I was really, um, delighted to attend, uh, at the U.S. Army Heritage Center, um, Rick, Rick Atkinson, who is a Pulitzer Prize-winning author, um, whose father actually, um, was on staff at the War College, uh, uh, was, is releasing his second book on, um, uh, the, the, the war of all wars that came right through Cumberland County, and, um, he, his perspective is fantastic on the American Revolution, and, um, as I said, Pulitzer Prize-winning, fascinating conversation, and just, uh, tremendous, it will be tremendously, I look forward to reading it, but it's, uh, big. And I have to do one first. I have to, well, it's like, it's a trilogy, so it's a trilogy. I, this is two, and now I have to go back and read one. Um, and the time period is eight years, so this book, I think, covers three years, and it's fascinating. The Katic Board did have a meeting. Um, they continue to provide limited updates on Frog Switch. It's a very long, uh, project timeline. And I continue to reiterate that the county, borough, and community are all very interested in the project and, uh, respectfully request to be kept, kept informed. Um, their Policy and Planning Committee is essentially defunct, uh, currently as they reorganize and refocus. Um, the Katic Tourism Meet, uh, Committee met, and the Tourism Committee will begin sun- sunsetting the COVID Recovery Grant Program, and as I may have mentioned before, they're beginning a review of all of the grants to that, reevaluate their purpose, review requirements, uh, maybe thresholds of grant levels, and to see if they're meeting the, uh, goals set for the organization. And this afternoon, at the Cumberland County Historical Society at one o'clock, there will be an update to approximately a hundred tourism partners. I will be welcoming the group, um, and come on down if you have time. That's it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fashi.
Okay, so May twenty-second, um, I attended the Law Enforcement Treatment Initiative Press Conference at the Historic Courthouse with the district attorney and local law enforcement and, uh, the state's attorney general. And this particular initiative, um, is to assist police in how they deal with people that are driving under the influence and how we can get people into treatment and prevention rather than sending them immediately to jail. So it was, it was a very good press conference. I appreciate the work of our district attorney, Sean McCormack, in the way that he thinks about, uh, law enforcement and, um, diversionary things. I think it's, it's very good, and it's good for the taxpayer, for people to be in diversion, for people to be in treatment, and it keeps people out of prison because of working. You're reunited with their families, all good things. Uh, May twenty-fourth, I attended the Hampton Township Memorial Day Event, Event at Veterans Park. Hampton Township, Hampton Township's Veterans Park is beautiful. If you haven't been there, get out to it. It, it's just really fantastic. They have an event for every patriotic holiday, and you can just go there and go for a walk. Uh, it's, it's really very nice.
It's windy up there.
It is windy. Sometimes it's very hot, too. Um, May twenty fourth, I also attended the Joint Shippensburg Newbir, Newburg Volunteer Firefighters Fundraiser. And it was in Shippensburg. And it was, it was so much fun. And I, you know, our volunteer fire companies do so much work to raise funds on their own, to provide for their own equipment. But one of the things that I walked away from uh thinking about that particular event is that they fed people all day long. So you could buy a ticket for ten dollars and you could come and feed your family all day long. That is, that is a community service, right? It takes, right, they put fires out, they keep us safe, they save our lives, they save our property. And then, and they're also feeding us. It, it really was, it was a great event. I was glad to be there. Um, May twenty sixth, I attended the Monroe Township Memorial Day Event at the cemetery. Um, and that was a Civil War celebration. I attended the Camp Hill Memorial Day Event. Um, that was another excellent event. And the Camp Hill High School, boy, they do such a good job with the music. They're, they're really terrific students. Uh, May twenty seventh, Conservation District met and they, of course, brought some things to us today. Um, yesterday, Commissioner Nieder and I attended the Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authority's ribbon cutting of their new connection space. So if you're interested in using space, I know that CCHRA would be happy to rent that space to you. Um, it is summertime and it's time to read some books and make sure that you're fresh to go back to school in the fall. Or you could just brush up on your calculus with the Cumberland County library system. Enjoy. Um, and the LEPC Summit is of course coming up in October. And that is all I have.
Thank you. I, I like how you moved the library system to a different place.
I didn't.
You just stuck it in somewhere else. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Eichelberger, what do you have for us?
Okay, just briefly, uh, I did touch base with uh Justin regarding recycling. Of course, we dealt with the uh advisory committee today. He did ask me to pass on the May thirty first Household Hazardous Waste Event. We had two hundred and ninety nine customers, just shy of twenty seven thousand pounds collected. Um, so that continues to obviously be a, you know, pretty successful and, and welcomed uh function of the county uh by our constituents. I checked in with MH uh IDD. Mark Evans is out of town, so I didn't get an IDD update. Um, the board meeting, I'm sorry, the advisory committee meeting is next week. I'm planning to zoom in on that. Uh, also, the, uh, I did get an update from Annie regarding some of the MH stuff. Of course, we have our information session tomorrow regarding uh progress report with Connections Walk In Center. Uh, looking forward to that. Also, she mentioned to me, uh, I guess a piece of good news in a sea of not such great news is they've been working with the providers who have been impacted by the cuts. And she's happy to report that very few individuals were losing their employment as a result of these reductions. Most of the providers have been able to find other positions within their organization. So staff's transitioning to other parts of the operation. We're keeping those folks, you know, engaged in a very important issue. Uh, and that's uh, you know, a little something to be thankful for, obviously. So uh, also, she did report, I think everybody's aware of this, with the, the um demise of, of uh teen line or the county's role in teen line. There have been a series of meetings with school districts that she's been uh participating in. They have met with five districts so far. And um, they have three additional scheduled this week. Um, she said that those have been helpful to the schools so they can engage in their planning going forward. I'm sure we'll have more questions for her on that when uh, when she presents to us. But uh, that's what she has for me today and that's what I presented. And I think that's pretty much everything I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, that takes us then to agenda item twenty five, which is Report of Executive Sessions. And I would like to report that an executive, executive session was held on May twenty nine, twenty twenty five at nine thirty AM regarding personnel. And I'll ask if there is any other business to come before the board today.
None.
Hearing none, seeing none, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.